I don't know what that number is.
Do you know?
What, which is me?
Uh, I just wondering how we would do that. We are relaxed with the jeans, they're over there with dresses on. How would we combine both of them like that?
You walk in with what you got?
Come as you are.
I just wondered what it would be. Yeah, because I think, I think the church doesn't care and the board doesn't care. I agree with that, but what would it be? Okay, that's a good question though. Somebody, oh, I can't go to the sanctuary because all I got is jeans on. That, that could be very one.
They were wearing those when we went in. They were wearing, they were in shorts.
Well, they've been purged and there was one, the sanctuary discussion right back here. Did you have, want to say something?
I think it was just an agreement, come as you are.
Come as you are? I like the way you put that.
We, uh, we go to a Baptist church, heaven forbid, and we're in Texas. But, uh, there are people coming in there
Oh, no!
in Harley shirts and suits. I mean, it's just
It's making us all kind of scared.
But just about the mix of music, you know, group that would be like that. Like, I was brought up with traditional music, but I really feel as if the future is in contemporary church, contemporary music. Because I don't think anybody that wasn't raised with traditional music appreciates it. Uh, and it's not my personal opinion, but I'm just saying that other people don't seem to get traditional music unless they, they were raised with that. And so I think that there's some value to having this service with, with just contemporary music. Because I think that's kind of the future of the church, so.
But eventually maybe we will, but there's still a lot of older people that like it, you know?
I like, I like the middle times, I'll do it.
Yeah, and so then why would you combine them together, you got both?
I like the mix.
If on, uh,
I think that's important, mixing.
On Sunday morning, they have now, Mark has started praying, usually one hymn with the drums.
Yeah, yeah, right, everybody likes that.
I think it still needs to be separate. I still think there needs to be a traditional service and a contemporary service. Because you have a younger generation that, um, if you look around at the other churches in this area, we are underdeveloped in that area now.
Oh, we are underdeveloped in contemporary as opposed to ambition.
And that's what you're competing for. That's why you're still getting, that's why you're confusing, you know, young families that will make this church grow.
I was wondering if you were saying we're ultimately that's all in a, uh, appealing to the younger generation.
Yep. Well, I think, yeah, I grew up in a church that the education hour is so critical to that. I love this education hour, and I know I'm salting the results, but I do love this education hour. Because I think if you get the young people into the education hour, you're going to get the adults in charge. They're gonna, these kiddos will pull their parents in. It's just like, statistics will show that over and over in a lot of, in a lot of churches, this has happened. Yes, Tom?
One thing, uh, the service stays here, if it does. I would like the center aisle and not divide it up in thirds.
You don't like where the chairs are set up, right?
I agree.
I like the center aisle rather than in thirds. It's easier for collection plate people too. It's, it's very confusing.
Well, yeah, the collection plate, that's like the one issue we had with this. The issue was it was in two sections, is nobody would fill in the seats so that we were constantly backfilling as people walked in and we were adding more chairs and adding more chairs and making a giant commotion just because there weren't as many aisles for people to come down and sit on the entrance.
That's a good point.
That's why we're in three sections instead of two.
Let's move away from chairs and back into church services. Uh, is there anything that you would like to see different? Let's look at some options. We pretty much talked about a blended service. We've talked about, uh, flip-flopping. We've talked about keeping things as they are. There seems to be a preference for a traditional and a contemporary. Okay, let's look at some other options for Sunday services. Do we have any ideas, uh, for other options for Sunday services?
I don't know if this would appeal to anybody, but I know a lot of the contemporary people have church on Saturday night.
Yep.
Or even the Wednesday night.
Andrew?
In that regard, having another prayer praise service or something would be really good for me because I came from a church that had a two-hour worship service. And so you have a lot of time to, so having, you know, since that isn't really practical for us here, you know, having another service that people could go to that would be more prayer and praise, without maybe the sermon, just prayer and praise, would be fantastic, I think.
And then again, then you also have to keep in mind, you know, you're upping your cost. So I'll, I'll certainly put that down.
Could be in somebody's home, could have had homes to, you know?
There you go. That's, uh, that's certainly a tradition in the church, because home churches, yes. Uh, what else, other options that you'd like to hear or like to explore?
What about Wednesday night program, um, in conjunction with fourth Wednesday dinner?
The Wednesday night program is in the process of being expanded. There is a timeframe, as I understand, to go from four Wednesday night dinner to second and fourth Wednesday night dinner. And trying to increase that to make that more of a church-wide utilization rather than just dinner. Uh, I come from a tradition of that, so, um, that to me sounds wonderful. What else do we have? What are your options? If you don't want to talk about options, are there things that we've, we've not touched on in your mind about what you want to see, you don't like this, or you do like this? I hate to put it in that kind of definitive terms, but we really want to get down to the meat of the, of what this congregation is thinking. Tom?
I always enjoyed when the kids stayed at the service to have the pastor talk to the kids in front of the audience. They were really, really well done. I know it's a lot of work, but it may not work for the kids.
Oh, yeah.
They may, Cheryl will, will know a lot about how it would affect the school.
You would be taking time away from your education.
Yeah. I don't want to do anything to disturb that aspect.
We'd make it work. We'd make it work. That would work.
It was so much a part of the service at the time, I thought.
The adults liked it better than the kids.
Oh, see, and I'm just the opposite. Yes.
But when we started our church in Ann Arbor, we didn't have any curriculum for the kids. And one of the things we kind of periodically did is we had the kids work on the same text the sermon was on. And then come back into the service and give a little presentation, a drama or a reading or something, and then tie it, what was happening in Sunday school back with what was happening in the church, so.
They did that in each church, probably.
That wasn't all the times, kind of periodically did.
What else? What else do you want? Yes?
One thing that I would, um, I guess caution with a little bit is just the time. I appreciate this is a good time to like talk about how the education hour and views. I think it's a huge key component to everybody's growth. I love the idea of the contemporary and the traditional being together. Being at the other meeting, mainly traditional, um, congregation meeting there, um, you know, there was a focus on, you know, bringing the traditional and contemporary together. But my, my suggestion is just to be cautious of doing everything so quickly. Um, I don't want a meeting, one meeting and everybody, as we vote and as we vote after this one, as they did after the other one. You know, I think everybody gets passionate about what they like to do, what they think is best. But just like the education hour, I felt like I was a part of, a part of those meetings, but we then hit the road with two feet and just started rolling. Where I feel like we maybe moved a little too fast. Or we could have made things a little bit better, or educated people a little bit better, or got more people involved rather than just hitting them around full speed. Just like right now, as we're looking at what can we do better? Not saying that that's what we're going to do, is just go to that next step already, but just to be thoughtful. One thing that I appreciated, and a lot of people were talking about that blended, um, service. And then, you know, right, I like the idea, but I also understand there's a lot of factors that go into it, the praise angle. There's a lot of things that go into it, even though ideally that, it would be great to see someone in our older congregation and our younger congregation, for them to kind of see and get a feel for how well those services happen. But at the same time, I also appreciated, you know, someone saying, well, we just do the fifth, anytime there's a fifth Sunday of the month, let's make that happen one time, everybody gets together. Rather than just saying, I think this is great. There's so many factors and variables that go into making it run well. You know, you just don't, you know, get really planned things out. And I think like educational, all of those things, I hope we just take our time to do it correctly and get as much input as possible.
I agree with everything he said.
He wanted I to agree.
It was too fast, he said, all those changes too fast, I felt.
Okay.
I like the fifth Sunday idea of blending these two services. I don't think learning every Sunday word. We're just two different generations, maybe more than two different generations. We're four, five different generations. But I like very deep insights.
I, I like those ideas too. Personally, I don't think we moved too fast. I thought there was a lot of, like, there was a lot of time that went into it, a lot of thought. It did, when it did, you know, when the change did happen, I was like, whoa, okay. But I felt like a lot of time went into it. But when I said, uh, when I said earlier about blending the services, I was talking about a blended service in the sanctuary and a traditional service in the sanctuary. So it's still having two services, but I think that if our service, the contemporary service was in the sanctuary, we might draw in some traditional people. I've talked to a few that said, I'd, I'd really like to, to go to the contemporary service, but I want to be in the sanctuary. Yeah, but I like the sanctuary, that's my view too.
Again, you have to think about cost on that. We would have to find, if we embedded the sanctuary with all the services, we would have to find a way to make your baby stuff, your screens and your sound system and all that. That's something that's critical. So that may be an issue, I don't know. We're still, we're looking at all this, we're not going to throw anything out. You know, we're just going to put everything out there to discuss.
But with the money that we would have to put into that, whatever that might be, be saved. Like, it's not necessarily by not having it here and not eating this and not having this.
That's, certainly, this is all going to the board.
Maybe that will balance out somehow.
Yeah, yeah, this is all going to the board. It's right here, just a moment.
I think, I think drawing, uh, from the traditional service to the contemporary, if it was in the sanctuary, everything, um, that would be, I think it would, because my husband and I walked down here and did not realize what was really going on. We just saw people pull them in the parking lot from the eight-thirty service and thought, what's going on there? And then we walked down here and we heard, and it was like, oh my goodness. We have, and we converted. But you know, it, it was only because we were exposed.
Yes.
And you would be if you were.
That's a good point, that exposure can make a difference.
You get to see people late, you don't want to see.
Well, I think
Whether because they stay late or they come in early.
I think a lot of that too, Mark, is that at fourth Wednesday night dinner, I'll say to somebody, do you know that couple sitting right at that back table? Yeah, they're going to contemporary. And you know, I don't know who you are, a lot of times, I don't know who you are.
That's what, one thing that putting the education hour between two services has split up a lot. You don't get the interaction to, because when, before they had that, and our services were fairly close, we'd always walk up front and talk to the people that, you know, that are on.
But the difficulty with classes sometimes.
I, I cannot emphasize enough how important I think it is for this education hour. I just, I think that's, that's going to be huge for getting our church in soon, in just the same spot. If we can't pull off the two services in the sanctuary that's economically feasible, or whatever the reasons are.
Quick question, she has nothing.
Have you used more words?
John has nothing.
John has nothing.
John has nothing.
Uh, Andrew?
Well, I was just going to say, I had no problem with the changes we made previously and how fast we made them, because I think we were wearing on our pastors. I think Pastor Dan and Pastor Jeff were having real trouble with three services back to back with no real space to breathe. And, and I think we, I just have a lot of compassion on them and we needed to do something for them, so.
Well, we all know how Dan struggled with just his voice because of the allergies that we all had. Yeah, okay, what else do we have? Changes? Yes, Betty?
Carol, um, there were three different people that told me that they refused to come to traditional eight-thirty service. It was way too early. And that you would not see them until today when there was the town hall meeting.
Well, I don't feel well with change sometimes. Just put that out.
You have to change with the, you know, talk with them.
Yeah, but some people just cannot do it. Like, because of handicap or whatever. One of, you know, one of the couples that, yeah, well, one of the couples that doesn't come to the traditional eight-thirty service, I know this for a fact, if you doesn't mind me sharing this, is that he's struggling with health issues. And it just takes him longer in the morning, he says, to get his joints oiled. So he gets to move around, yeah.
But, you want to get up a half tomorrow or?
Not my call. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. Wait, wait a minute. Mark, did you hear something to understand?
I didn't have it.
Oh, I'm sure it's scratching your hand. I don't want to.
I was scratching.
This, Mark? Okay, Mark.
With the handicaps, could be that they might have somebody come in. And those are preset, obviously.
Fixed times? Yeah, yeah, okay. What else?
We have a thing I think we need to think about. We're thinking about ourselves, people that come to this church. But what about the people we want to reach to bring in this community? I heard it on TV just today, that, um, a preacher was talking about it. And he said, you know, the young people don't go and listen to organ music. They don't buy organ CDs. You know, they want the tradition of the contemporary music. So I think to draw people in, we need to have a music contemporary service. Or old, old people.
Yes.
I love this, we need to change. I think it was fine how fast it happened. I, the issue I had with it was the amount of communication that was spread out. So like, a lot of things were, when we were welcoming new staff, we were like, okay, instead of education hour, now we're going to meet the social room and do the same. But it was only told like a week before. And if you weren't here that week, you just kind of showed up and didn't know what was going on. So we, we saw people come in the front doors and nothing was going on, it turned out would be. So having a better communication system, just to let everybody know what the schedule is, what's happening for you to be, especially because a lot of people here don't come every single week. Sometimes they're every other week, they're once a month or so. Having a good way for people to know what's going on, I think, would help them bring about some of the changes we are.
And if you're a community owner, that's, that's a good form of communication.
A good point, communication is in the middle list, absolutely, absolutely. Great point you've made.
And we'll look back with that, all right? I think that can come facilitating, bringing about the changes in our services.
Okay, the facilitation aspect and not the change per se, but the facilitation aspect, put that all into place.
Yep.
Okay, okay. I think I've got that. The system used to disseminate the information.
Yep.
Okay, okay. What else do we have?
I, I'm not sure this was written down, but having worked with young adults all of my career, um, and we want to draw young adults and young, young families, whether it's a family or single young adults in, um, I think having a class during the crossroads hour directed toward young adults is a really good idea. Um, we're talking a lot about trying to draw the community in, trying to draw young adults in. Offer a class that's, and I don't know how that might happen, but the topic might be, but that's more specific to, yes, college age.
College career.
Yes, college career. I, I'm, I'm sure there are topics that can be, yeah.
Well, our right now meetings have huge amounts of topics.
And maybe make it, you know, like, like he was just saying, make sure that there's a lot of communication about that, um, in the community, within the church, wherever, to try to draw those people in. If they just come to a crossroads class, they may become interested in it.
Yes, exactly, yes, straightforward, yes. I'm sure, yes, absolutely. Andrew?
Well, above that, it seems as though because of our economy, you people just start assuming that kids graduating from college or high school even are going to know someone else, because there aren't the jobs here that there used to be, or maybe wherever we were. And it seems like we're just sort of ignoring all of that class of people. We don't really have anything in form of, and it seems as though, just however few are staying, we should have something in the church for them.
Well, and there has been in the past, and it can sort of successful, we have a single adult kind of thing. So there's some things out there, but I think more consistency, I think, is what I'm hearing for you.
Well, and it's hard to, to catch them, so to speak, because they, they do have a lot of change going on in their lives. And a lot of things going on, maybe decisions growing up, you know, lots of things. So it's, it's hard to capture that through.
Oh, it is hard to capture that, but yes, yes, we want. Okay, we're going to wrap this up. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add to any of these three points? Liking, disliking, Sunday options?
I was going to talk about the schedule. The last meeting, a huge factor was on switching traditional and contemporary service. And I think that's been brought up here, but that was like, like huge topics.
Yeah, having the traditional service at this service time and this service time at the eight-thirty.
That's fine.
You're not going to get people in. Not the kids, not the kids.
People with kids.
We're going to have eight-thirty, sorry.
Kids are going to, who we are.
You won't get your teenagers?
Carol, don't mess with the contemporary service.
From, from my point of view, since I don't have to, which is kind of asking the people their kids what they want. You know, because I don't know.
Nine-thirty. Yes, John, John.
I was going to say, so
Wait, 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 John.
So from the first town hall meetings, the reasons we picked these times or contemporary have later times because families with kids, it takes them a while to get them ready. Contemporary service was at eight-thirty, families would just go somewhere else.
Nine-thirty.
When my nine-thirty comes.
Yeah, that's good. In what way? It's cool, well, that's the church. He's not going to get up.
I'm going to get your kids. I'm going to get your kids. I can say, I said I can get my kids here, but I'm just putting it also, when you're looking at attracting people to your church. I mean, you look at the other people. My kids, sure, like, nine o'clock, if we were here contemporary, I'd have been here nine o'clock, I'd have a problem. But, you know, someone who, you know, had people that had come to our church, um, to kind of visit our church, they haven't come back. You know, if they were here at eight thirty, I don't know if they were going to step in our church. So I think you have to look at it from more than just, you know, what we would do right now.
Absolutely, right.
You know, being part of this already, think about looking out, reaching out to others. I don't know personally, this could be hard either way.
Yes?
I just think you have to be very, very careful not to mess with this service because, uh, this is the growth engine of this church at this point in time. And we have to do whatever it takes to keep this service going. And this is the growth area of the church. And I think we'd really be hurting our chances if, you know, we messed with that with this service. I think that, that's where the young people are going to come and we can get in here and attract them and the young children, um, you know, this is, this is our future. This, this, this.
This is where our future is, is what you're saying.
I think, it's definitely the kids. And the kids are the growth points, are the major growth points of the church.
That's been one of the discussion questions that was brought up, or one of the discussion points brought up in the other. And I hate to translate, but it hasn't been touched on, I want to get this wrapped up. What about dropping your service thirty minutes later? Is that messing with the service?
Yeah.
That's messing with the service.
That's too much later.
What about fifteen?
I would have given fifteen minutes.
It's just that the choir doesn't have to be there at eight o'clock. Traditional service needs to be. Too hard. That's very, that's a good point. It, it gets too hard to remember.
Yeah, I mean, you have to remember the time. It has to be a half hour now.
You were here at nine forty-five, maybe something.
Yeah. And there's also We're smart enough, Andrew, to figure that out.
I'll just say it's difficult for people to remember.
Well, there's also the idea that there's a community theater in Chiborden, Wisconsin, that starts their theater at eight seventeen.
Oh, for seventeen.
Yeah.
It's really that time.
It starts at eight seventeen.
Really that time.
So there you go. Okay, anybody have anything else you want to add to this that we talked about? Tom?
One little thing, uh, when you have a meeting like this next time, if there is a next time, have a sound. The only one I could hear without sound was my wife Dorothy. Now, not everyone talks that way. I, I knew a lot of people who talked, but I don't really know what they did.
I am sorry, we will try to make, we have this again, we will make that happen. Absolutely, we will make that happen. Have an external sound system.
We have hearing systems.
We can do that.
Sanctuary. Carol, we have hearing systems in sanctuary. We had a microphone and a microphone.
And Tom knows that, but he used to go there.
Anything else? Okay, I just want to see a show of hands. Just, how many of you want to leave it just like it is? Without any changes?
Well, I don't want any changes.
Well, I mean, as far as the schedule itself, how many of you want to leave the schedule? Where, traditional is eight-thirty? Okay, no changes, okay. About half an hour to me. How many of you want to flip-flop and put the traditional at the second hour, second hour? I'm not getting any on that. Okay. How many would consider a fifteen or a thirty-minute extension later?
Two, three, four.
I'm going to have to add something to that.
Okay.
You didn't answer a question in the other one.
I kind of did, and I got when I was
You know, I'm just saying that
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They, there was some discussion about it, but not a lot.
I think we have to ask a couple questions each time, otherwise.
Yeah, it won't work. You're right, Steve, you're right, I don't think I did ask that.
You didn't ask.
Any other comment?
You didn't ask, can we, would like a half hour?
Yeah. I have a hairball. Wait, 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 hold on.
It's just a, it's a comment. Whatever it is that we are doing, um, carrying that thought process through to the community and pub, written publications that are out there.
Yeah.
You know, the people might see that publication, come to, come here and miss opportunities or have misinformation. You know, whether there's a leaflet or a flyer out there, I mean, it's going to be hard to write all that in.
You're right.
There was a situation today where somebody was very upset that it wasn't going, uh, they weren't going on like they thought. It was just because of that town hall meeting.
Oh, okay.
There are people out there that didn't be fed spiritually.
And they missed that meeting.
They missed that because of the town hall meeting.
Okay.
Or, um, the service wasn't at the time that they thought it was. So you need to write that in. If, if, if we can allow them to keep a tab on what type of publications might be out there in the community. Give the literature and/or Give the literature and/or put it out there.
Are you saying there may be some old time?
Yeah, there, that most definitely might be.
That from older pamphlets or?
Yes, yeah.
Make sure that all of our signage, all of our resources are up to date.
It is correct and/or, you know, I don't know how we can track what may be out there, you know.
Okay, okay.
Just that I think if there is some publications.
We need to make our reading consistent.
Yeah. And it's gotta, gotta be hard to do with changing.
Anything else? Let's, I'm going to close it up with just a really short prayer. If you'll bow your hands, this was from Paul's letter to the church at Thessalonica. This is from First Thessalonians one two. We thank God for all of you, mentioning you in our prayers. We continually remember before our God and Father, your work produced by faith, your labor prompted by love, and your endurance inspired by hope in our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you. One more reminder, email, text, get in touch with me if there's something that you think maybe I didn't understand what you were saying or you want to expand on something you have to say.